Do you want mine?
No.
You got it.
The drug bag.
I had me follow your trail. It's like, I'm sorry.
Just cleaning.
Well, I had them call somebody.
What, I had them?
No. When after I saw the condition of the man.
No, thank you. Thank you. We could pick tonight?
Maybe.
We gotta get to the pool before nine o'clock.
Okay.
Well, time enough to do laps before nine, so we'll make it last.
How's family? They're all good now? Everybody okay?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
We're almost.
Yeah. You're always trying to make the news, aren't you?
Anyway, I can.
You're something going on.
Anyway, I can.
Honey, turn that corner really fast.
Oh, it did. Was it in the news associated with you? What was it?
No, it was an article, but no names.
Yeah, other than the other driver.
They're a colony. They're a colony.
Oh, were they?
Were they?
I just didn't answer.
Is the car totaled or was it?
No.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Call the finance committee. 2013 budget reappraisal.
Thank you. So before you is an item that we had started to think about at our last meeting. So before you is the fact that the assessor within the city that we won't be continuing with the current assessor of record tests September 13th. So the city has a vacancy. And to fill that vacancy, we look externally and internally. And what we're proposing here is to make a change internally where we would have a current city employee move into the position of the city assessor at a rate as disclosed here in the evaluation and analysis. City assessor right now on the budget is, has a salary of $73,000 and we are asking to have that increased to $81,828 and fill that position with the city supervisor of receipts. And then we have the ability to do some backfilling within the receipts department which allows us to take advantage of the abilities of individuals that have been in that position, both of them for well over eight years in receipts. And one of the, some of the things I want to point out to you on this is, as it shows on the second page, this is a net zero where we're utilizing savings from one position to the other. And to point out to you that, as I said, we advertised externally and internally and there were 12 candidates from outside of the city, only four of which had any type of assessment experience. None of them lived in the city and one of the most promising gave us a salary range that started at $85,000 if they could not have to live in the city or $105 if a requirement would be to live in the city. So also the assessor previous to the sitting assessor right now was paid $83,200 when they separated from the city back in 2011, I believe that was. So I want to point this out from the perspective too that I know I've heard some characterization of this as giving a raise, but I'd like to respectfully suggest that what this is, is a vacancy within the city and what we are attempting to do is fill it with the most appropriate individual. And that is what is being recommended here. And because that person is a city employee, I would suggest that you look at that as a promotion. It's not like they're going to be doing their same job. They're going to be doing a job that has different requirements, one of which those requirements is to be more active with other departments and here with the council when certain things having to deal with the assessment department is on the table. And I think if you think back, you'll realize that with our current assessor, that wasn't the case. So we really feel that we're giving you a recommendation for a very positive change, a change that will create a good team within the city and has a net zero budget effect in 2013. And it actually creates very, very limited savings, so I'm not even gonna call them savings. If you were to take the current staff and punch it into 2014, it would cost just about $6,000 more than this. So there's a reduction in 2014 budget with making this change.
I'm hearing what I'm looking, this is proposed revised budget, $76,300, but then you're saying $81,828.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So what you see in the table is the effect on the 2013 budget. And since we're making this change effective October 1st, you're not going to see a whole, the whole increase in salary. You're only going to see the increase in salary that's necessary.
To finish the year.
To finish the year, right. Because this is showing you what's going to happen with the current budget that the city's operating under.
Any questions?
Actually, I have a question about, I have a question about the salary increase because to me, it doesn't seem like a promotion. It's an increase in a position that are existing, so I'm not really sure I understand why the increase. In addition to that, you said that the other individuals who applied for this position didn't meet the requirements. So my question is, the person who we're proposing, do they meet the minimum New York State requirements to be an appointed assessor?
The, let me just make sure.
Well, some of the stuff, getting into the actual hiring, don't think to go beyond this discussion, public discussion, I would be more willing to brief the council in greater detail on the actual individuals that apply to other things in executive session, but I'm not going to engage that discussion in the public session.
Any other questions?
Nope. I'm prepared to move it.
I have a few.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Trying to do the thing, let everybody else talk first, because I blur out my.
Okay.
So when we advertise for the position, where did we advertise? How much, how did we promote it? What methods of recruitment did we get for this kind of somewhat specialized career path?
We went in the Gazette and I am 98.9, if not 100% sure. We did Albany to you also, as well as out on our web and definitely within internally as we would with everything. Normally, we try to, we sort of stay within the Gazette because it is, advertising is expensive and you get something out on the web and you get the word out and you usually do pretty good. But knowing how important this was and how much we wanted to outreach, I'm relatively sure we went to both papers on that. And we did receive a response from many, many different areas. I mean, out west of New York State as well as some local, but not in the community, some over in Albany and over on the other side of the river. So the word was out there and we did receive resumes. We got a lot of, some resumes through Monster too.
So did it make it onto Monster?
Yes.
That's good enough. And then one of the discussions, you know, people have asked me just to, kind of just being out and about, is, you know, whether the, you know, I know there's an effort to get city employees residing in the city. When you're talking about a plow driver or an attorney or someone in finance, it's all good things, but when you're talking about an assessor, some people feel that having an assessor who's not tied into knowing people, having your neighbor, gee, how do you assess your neighbor's house? How do you assess your family's house? It's almost a little too close for comfort, so to speak. What is, I mean, maybe Gary could talk to this as well. And, you know, my, one of the concerns that was brought up was, is an assessor someone who maybe would be better off not living in the city? Just as a one-time, because of the specifics of the job?
Without looking at all the resumes?
Well, that's part of the rhetoric. You know, the last assessor was hired, the terms and conditions that if she was given the opportunity for a full-time appointment, would move to the city. Then they come back with this argument, oh, I don't live in the city, that there's some conflict. I expect employees in this city to function as professionals. I expect their decisions to be respected and that they do it on merit and that I'm gonna hire people that are gonna perform at that level. And people that use these shell games to try and create reasons why they don't live in the city, I don't want to work in here. And I want that message to go out clear and there isn't any question in anybody's mind. We're gonna hire people that are gonna live here and are going to perform at the level they're expected.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Just so that we can assume that this individual does live in the city?
Yes.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if you want to vote on this now or is there any other specific questions that would deal with the council, deal with an executive session?
I have some questions, but I think they're executive session.
Okay. If you want, we can just.
I'd move the adjournment. We want to go to executive session or recess.
Recession.
Executive session. On this.
Yeah, but I mean, let's go into executive session at the end, not.
Yeah, okay. That's a good idea if people want to do that, so we're second to you.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one up, restore assistant chief position for 2013. Chief.
Thank you once again. This was taken off the table last time around, but thanks to Finance Commissioner, did you know him, for working with me on this. The paperwork that you have in front of you, I think, has the actual breakdowns. I do have money in this year's budget to fund this. This is what I consider to be an essential management position. There are going to be, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, some big changes in our department next year. We have some retirements for some high-ranking officers. There, in a period of transition like that, I think we do need some strong management people and I could really use the assistance this year. I think it would be wise to have someone involved in budget talks as we go into these transition times. And bottom line is, I do have the money to pay for it and it's a very, very important position.
Does anybody have some questions?
Yes.
Well, I think it's important too to have someone who's next in line and knows all the things that the person who's head does, in case you, you know, you decide you want to retire. My question though is for, do you have it for 2013? What's the impact on 2014 budget?
Well, I requested the position be funded for 2014. I did have a surplus going into this year. I expect to be within budget for next year and I'm hopeful that we can send, set aside some of those funds to help fund the position for next year as well. Some of this money is being allocated right now. I was hoping to come back for half the year. Looks like we're really gonna be the last quarter of the year, so in some cases that helps the situation as far as funding.
And we'll look within budgetary criteria the council puts in place, you know, essentially budget October 1st. And it's part of the review that's going on not only in the fire department, but every department. So we're looking at those staffing levels, we're looking also at the workload we're doing, how do you best match it up? Going back two years ago, did the arson team put that in place? That has seen some dramatic results. One of the things we have in the fire department still is roughly two-thirds of the calls are medical in nature. Some of those are nap calls that I believe we should necessarily be sending paramedics to. And it's how do we best manage some of those things? How do we get the message out there? And that goes somewhere, you know, in the fire department, it's the whole continuum of care within the medical community and designable discussions with Ellis Medicine, other providers. We want people to have adequate services. We want to deliver high-quality services, but how do we put the appropriate services there in the most cost-effective manner? And look forward to having that discussion continue with the councils. We're looking at the budget and just exchanging ideas as we go through the process, not only for this position, but the overall staffing department.
My only question is, what's changed from last year's budget when we chose not to fund this position? What's changed now to fund the position now?
Well, I did request that the position be filled last year and also the year before.
The council chose not to fund.
Counsel chose not to, but Mr. Erickson's suggestion was to come back in the middle of the year this year. Council did restore the assistant chief's position, the third assistant chief's position in the police department. And so I apologize, I was late, a little later than half the year coming back, but I really can use the help. And you know that we're a busy city as far as fires are concerned. When I left the office just now, our fire investigators were interviewing people relating to some fires that we've had recently. Where it's a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation and sometimes I need a little break too.
Again, this is the management position where we spend huge chunk of money on public safety, police and fire and have one branch of person running the whole fire department. Everybody else knows disrespect to their performance, to their ability, but they're within the collective bargaining unit. And there's some things in terms of motivating people, keeping the reins on the operation and making sure that we do deliver the high level of service. It's having this position there, believe positions the city in the best long-term goals. We're looking, how do you improve things? And we look at these things all the time. How do you look at call volume? How do we reduce costs? How do we do things cheaper? A lot of these things aren't things that save millions of dollars, but can we save a couple hundred bucks here? Can we generate a couple thousand dollars more in revenue? How do we do that? And this position again strengthens that overall management structure. It's what historically has been there. Where the city was in tighter fiscal conditions before, we are. City's strength is there, dealing with some of the housing problems, some of the revenue problems and believe that this is a good investment long-term to have this position there as part of the organizational structure and the command staff.
You know, it wasn't that many weeks ago that we sat around this table and asked how we could possibly have one individual in a position without any infrastructure to support that position when the person decided to leave. And that's exactly what we're looking at without an assistant chief. So as we sit here as a council and say, how could we possibly have one person running a water plant with no plan to support that person leaving? I look at this and go, same situation. Something happens to the chief or if he wants to retire, whatever, we're gonna be sitting at the table saying, how can we not have the infrastructure to make sure our fire department is led appropriately?
That's kind of what I had in my notes, really. I wanted to see if, you know, at some point during now and next Monday, you could provide me with an organization chart, just in terms of this chart helps me visualize a little better in terms of the commands, you know, the hierarchy? And then have a little bit of a discussion we could have during the week in terms of, I can't remember what term we used to call it, but what's the replacement plan? I mean, you might want to retire in the next 30, 40 years and then, you know, somewhere in there, we have to get the next guy.
No.
I hope that nothing happens to me, but I am going to retire someday. And, you know, as Winston Churchill famously said, failure to plan is planning to fail. And I do not want to be in that position for the fire department. We've had, we have excellent command staff. Our platoon commanders have actually stepped up probably outside of the realm of their responsibility because they are union members, but they've done things that really are not union member functions. They've attended some of the department head meetings and been in on discussions that really are not appropriate to our union membership. They've done that because they've had to do that in my absence and it's really not a good situation.
Any questions?
No, I'm prepared to move it.
I'm prepared to second it. I'm amazed you've gotten along as well as you have without the position.
And if you could give me the org chart, then we can have a discussion later in the week, so I can have the visual representation in the council.
Absolutely.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So move, we recess, oh, we already moved to recess finance, that item, right?
Okay. And I will call to order city development and planning. First item on the agenda is a revocable permit for 153 Barrett Street. Mr. Allen.
Evening, everyone. This is a revocable permit for National Planning Group at 153 Barrett Street downtown, 18 inches high, 34 inches wide, hangs in the city right away by approximately probably six inches to a foot, really not too much, but it's still a liability that did not get one. There's not too much additional information on this.
Questions?
Looking for, where on Barrett Street is it?
Barrett Street, I believe it is.
Is it that one over there, huh?
153 Barrett.
I believe it's behind us, yeah. Not going towards Union Street.
Yeah, right. All right, no questions, all entertain a motion. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Parasso, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick and easy. Mr. Schreikman, land bank.
Good evening, everyone. The first part, we discussed two weeks ago the need to amend the intergovernmental cooperation agreement to allow Albany to participate in the land bank. That is not, the timeline in that is not as critical as I thought it was at the time. It's not a requirement for the grant application, so we're working that through slowly with Albany and the other governments and that will come back at a later date. The application to the attorney general, we're going to apply for about $3 million, which is the maximum, with four participating areas each providing projects. It will basically deal with acquisition, demolition, redevelopment of strategic properties and other enhancements as well. And this area will probably be focusing primarily in the north side, Eastern Avenue and the College Park areas, but there will be other strategic areas as well. We're going to submit in excess of $3 million because this is not a project, not a grant where you need to show site control, but you need to have enough projects lined up that you can show that you're gonna be able to tackle the projects very, very quickly. Let's see, we're also, most likely that will be within the grant submission, we'll be asking for money for support stash for the land bank and that may also flow back to some of the communities. Again, we're still developing this. It's a, we have two and a half weeks before this is due, but we're still pulling all the information together. What I am requesting is a letter of support. I require at least one letter of support from one of the government, one of the governmental units. So the county also is bringing this forward tonight, but basically a letter of support for a grant application. Yes?
Resolution of support.
Resolution of support, thank you. And also, what would enhance the application is if the city would commit to participating in one of the land bank's powers, which is that when the land bank sells properties, each tax district can commit 50% of the tax generated by that. So if the city, if the taxes are $2,000 that would come to the city on a property, they could give 50% of that back to the land bank for five years. So that would enhance the application if the city would participate in that piece. Again, it would be a lot of properties. The land bank can own, can hold properties for quite some time. You can actually, there's no limit on how long the land bank can hold the properties, but this is when they do sell them, the city could participate and I'm asking that the city.
I would ask the council to act affirmatively in that the 50% rule will strengthen the application for the bigger pot of money. And if you take the figure of $4,000, it's gonna be taxable value of your properties rehab and get picks on number, whether it's five or 6,000. If you use the 4,000, we're getting, our taxable portion of that is roughly a little under 30%. We've used 30%, so it's like $1,200 a year. So you'd be committing $600 a year for five years from the property. Right now, we're not getting anything from them. So by turning them over, making the commitment for five years, it adds strength in the application for this bigger pot of money. And again, it adds a little bit of flexibility to the land bank to deal with these distressed properties where, you know, you, we talk about general parameters here, you really still have to work through each one of these and treat it as an individual property, like the houses when we sell. You're looking at it, what's the offer, what's the best use is? Sometimes you'd like to get more, you'd like to get less. Everyone's a little bit different and there's complicating factors on each one that sometimes slow the process down. And that's why having stronger application, being able to get some more money where we can use it for additional demolition or rehabilitation, it just strengthens the overall marketing of the community and doing the neighborhood revitalization that I think we're all committed to do.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. I'm gonna be asking about 50% tax share. Is there any other matching that is required of the city for this, to apply to this grant?
There's nothing required. The more match we can show, the better obviously for the attorney general. So we'll be looking at all the different programs and even, you could even match this with the 108 loan guarantee or Holmes money too. So the more that we can, you know, the more that that strengthens our application or reinforces the projects we're going to do, the better it looks for us.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve this, to do the letter. Okay? Second. Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Couple of ceremonial resolutions, Ms. Parasso?
Yeah, I met a wonderful woman at the Nami picnic who runs a peer support group that is, you know, certainly deserving of recognition and also we get more people, more exposure, more awareness. And I thought certainly we hadn't recognized Nami either. And that picnic was a really special thing. There was tons of people there, it was a great event, and their work that they do throughout the year deserves some recognition as well. So I'm happy to move it.
All right. So we'll move it first through the peer organization, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. And then the motion for Nami?
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And one other resolution that we typically do this time of year is for 9/11. Mr. Thorne sent me an email and I couldn't figure out what he was asking me and it suddenly dawned on me that's what it was, so I would entertain a motion to do that. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, Ms. Parasso, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. DSIC legislative and agenda titled.
DSIC legislative and agenda titled Detail. What was this? I don't remember.
Was adding detail to the agenda and resolution titles. Discussion? Discussion or discussion?
Okay. Questions, Ms. Porterfield?
Well, yeah, I, I'm not sure what it was coming back, but I did, I think I sent an email to the judge once, because there was something on the agenda that just simply said reappropriation of budget, and it wasn't really specific to what particular budget item. And so, that wasn't clear if we were in the public, you know, what that was. So, when it's things like that, that, you know, it's true, like, I would think that to, you know, go a little bit further detail, exactly what, what that is that we're talking about and reappropriating is, it would be important on our agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Thorne and I both talked about that also, so we will start trying to do that. And, yeah, he's given you the, an example here of how we can have an extra sentence or two.
Helps me, too.
Yes, it helps me, too. I agree.
You know? Sometimes, like, weight controls weight.
Okay, so that, as I said, this is a discussion, so we're just, we're going to move forward with that, so we'll have more information. All right, is there anything else to come before city development planning? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Six and seven.
Sorry, I'm, okay. Okay, Upper Union Street, board appointer. Yes, sorry about that.
We've not received any.
Any names?
Less than names.
Okay, so, so if you know of anybody who might be interested in serving on the Upper Union Street bid, let's get some names.
I might know some.
Okay, check with them and see, and we can kind of move forward with this at our next meeting. All right, again, so if nothing else to come before city development planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Parasso, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, Hope for Order Health and Recreation. First item is asking for a ceremonial resolution for the Working Group on Girls. For, those of you who may not be familiar with the Working Group on Girls, it's a, it's asking the new district, it's a group of women to put together a group to work with young women. It's been around for, I'm going to say about eight years, and every year, there's, we work on museums, we go into the schools to work with the girls, and it's in eighth grade and ninth graders, to work with them on different projects, just to have, I think, some positive role models. So, they've been doing some really great work, and every year, there's a Girls' Day Out where they take them over to the Lenz Sanders Mansion. So, there's a group of women have been working really hard on this, and young women who have benefited from it, so I'd like to do a resolution for that.
I'll move that.
All in favor? Dog Park Committee.
What you have for you is a request to open a trust and agency account to handle the funds that are going to be raised by the Dog Park Committee. I'd like to thank Carl Faltico, who helped pull this together. Just to fill in a couple of holes that we had when we put this together, the Dog Park Committee is actually known formally, according to their representative, as the Dog Park Renovation Committee. And the area in Central Park that these ones would be used to, to enhance and renovate is going to be called the Dog Park in Central Park. And what the trust and agency account will do is allow for their fundraising to flow through the city and for expenses to be supported by those funds that they raise. This resolution is laying out a criteria in which for the first fifteen hundred dollars, they, they, meaning the committee, would be able to spend those funds on behalf of marketing and startup fundraising activities, but any, any expense to.
Dogs are for it, I know. Dogs are off their own.
Protesting, I think.
Any expense related to development and actual change within Central Park proper would first have to come to city council, be approved, before any expenditure would go forward. So, that is pretty much what is laid out here, which I think some members of the committee had seen prior.
Other questions?
Okay, just a comment, somewhat related to the topic, another trying to fund their renovation project, and one of the emails that came through today was, they want to apply for some grant or something where they maybe win a hundred thousand dollar renovation. I'm not sure if it would help their application with the renovation, running this, if there was some type of support from the city itself, so maybe we could just consider as a committee a resolution, and something that they could kind of send in with their application to say, look, the city's behind it, here's a set of formality, and it has our support, might help their cause to land the big, the big win on that fundraising.
That's a good idea.
So, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else coming to Health and Recreation?
To adjourn. Hope for Order Claims.